A couple of years ago, there was a guy that missed a round and then went off the road and hit a tree or a post or something that killed him. Uh, it was a spring box or something. Is that going right to you, Steve?
No, that's just, actually, they live in Maryland.
Really? Just driving too fast, you look at this.
Oh, it's because of the, um, sorry.
Just a sixteen-year-old guy. Yeah. Going by the other day. Yeah, we were driving a hundred.
Yeah, that's good.
There's a little happening. No, but you're done. Discuss your fifteen, doesn't make a thing, bad things can't get you. Oh. I still remember. Yep. Always, always, always. I lived on that road, I never rode it. Having it for girlfriends, what? Just show it off. We like Cheryl Rock signature name. Why is she, you know, her problem?
I'm like, if y'all signed it, if y'all knew, I figured it was okay.
So, the treasurer's report, you probably doubt it so much as the last signature, isn't that appealing?
No, you should just get y'all because I care.
We can see it's a damn door.
Your friend, he signs with us before.
Does she? We may be making some of that up.
Say what?
We may be making some of that up.
Yes, I am. Not, we not, no, we don't have.
It's no say, no, you know. Maybe, that's, sorry.
That's what my mama always said.
Sure, my mama always said, sure. She's getting, she's getting older. Yeah, you're pressing on sign of police, uh...
I can tell.
Seven hours after. It's like the first.
Yeah.
I should hear, I got consciousness. Sure. 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 Paper. Sounds about any Christian, I'm sure. Yeah. We give numbers. This is a different. I just give you bill of progress. We're playing with you, you know, you want to go up there and ask. Well, the county manager here, he's also, so...
I don't know, yeah, I'm just now solving. It wasn't hard. I've got a pretty long, I think, pretty good...
Referring to guys. I haven't seen him. They were called, the meeting's ordered. Some kind of commissioners' court, they're gonna regular meeting, it was twenty-sixth, twenty-nineteenth, it is nine thirty a.m. Let note that this meeting was focused, posted in a matter of four times, five, all members of the court are present. If there's a late, please thank the court. But, let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the many blessings that you give us. Thank you for the opportunity to serve this county and this wonderful state of Texas. Thank you for our health, and thank you for the ability to come and serve. Please, uh, bless and be with those who are in distress over family sickness and anything else that may be in any of their lives that's causing their life to be upset. Thank you for the men and women in uniform all over the world that keep evil away from our doors and all those wonderful first responders that are always there for us beneath them. All this we ask of Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own. I honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the deep Texas, one state under God, one individual.
Out of number three, on this end is our first public hearing on closed tax entrees, that's a large group of taxation. And a hearing formally about the budget and set tax rates and limits in operation that we're at service within September, Monday, September the ninth, twenty-nineteenth, at nine thirty a.m. In this courtroom, five sixteen fourth street, room one oh six, Brown Texas. The calculation of these rates, uh, were formed on August sixth, twenty-nineteenth, uh, myself, budget officer, um, with the assistance of our auditor, uh, with the assistance of our chief tax priser, and with the assistance of an expert tax person, um, from Orlando, Brandon R., uh, the link tax collection agent, C.D., efficient calculation of these rates against Eddie Wheeler, her assistance, and with the staff of, uh, the chief prisers and Mr. Rogers at the table, with us also. Uh, the effective rate for Young County calculated at point seven one four nine five seven. Rollback rate, uh, is calculated as point seven seven two five eight four, and our debt rate at point zero seven six five one four. This is a public hearing, and the court will entertain the county on the table. With regard to the tax rate, we have proposed a rate of point seven seven two five zero zero for a hundred dollars valuation, and that's proposed for adoption by the governing body of Young County. Uh, this rate exceeds the lower effective or rollback rate, and state law requires us to have two public hearings, uh, for, uh, before the adoption of such budget that would require such tax rate. Our tax rate, as proposed, can be lowered, and usually is, but it can go any higher than point seven seven two five zero zero, which is slightly below the rollback rate, so... Grobemut or any comment that the public or any group of court may want to do. How with regard to this public hearing, and this proposed tax rate? If there are none, um, I'll re-announce our budget adoption hearing. There'll be, there'll be a second public hearing, will be held September the third, twenty-nineteenth, in, in this room, five sixteen fourth street, room one oh six, Brown Texas. At nine thirty a.m., and that's on September the third. Our budget adoption hearing, once again, is set for September the ninth, nine thirty a.m., when we will consider a budget, one or more budgets. There will be no comment with regard to the setting of this proposed tax rate. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to close this public hearing, or declare it closed. For our vote, yes, sir. Motion by Bobby. And Mr. Rogers. To close this first public hearing, all places outside five oh... Out of number three, may both comments announced with presentations, three limited lines of five X. We've got all there, uh, update, fourth bell now. Neil, you wanna hear an update on fourth bell now?
Well, not really, but, yeah, um, we've got a lot of things going on right now. Um, program wise, um, other than a bunch of family reunions we gotta come up with the fall, um, we've got, um, quarter mile west, which was our fundraiser last year for, um, our local history event. Um, local history event, where we have a year this year, so, basically, that seems like a mile mile west turned out to be just a great thing for kiddos coming out. It's kind of like a tongue-in-cheek way the west ever was. We make fun of ourselves, we dress up in historically incorrect clothes, and it gets geared towards kids, um, so they can come and buy their poker chips and gamble and, um, get in a shootout with one of us or something like that. Kids absolutely love the parents, I think, like it for the kids, too, so, um, we've got that going on. The fourth weekend of October is our local history event, again. Um, we actually got Alny, the school is coming this year, they usually go to Fort Griffin. We've actually talked them into coming to us this time because we're closer, and the whole idea is to get kids to appreciate local history, because if, you know, if they can see their local history that's tangible, they get some interest in history, I want to be sure to do that, so, we're just down the road from them. They're gonna actually come to Fort Griffin and spend a couple hours Friday morning, and then they'll leave, go eat lunch, and then go to the, uh, Alny Heritage Museum, the museum in Alny, to get a tour of that.
Twenty-fifth?
The twenty-fifth, October twenty-fifth. Um, that's the school day, so we've got, um, Graham, Newcastle, and Alny are the big three ones in, uh, Gap County, and then City of New Indiana, Wichita Falls, are coming back. Um, are still working on pricing, trying to get pricing, because they usually go to Fort Richardson, because it's just...
What about the, uh, private schools?
Yes, uh, uh, the private schools and homeschools, I, um, I cater to them. With the public schools, what we do, because we're so confined on space, we only do an hour and a half, they can get through every one of the things in about an hour and a half, um, whereas Fort Richardson, they come and they stay all day. But if we have that many schools coming in, I stagger them out, so we'll have Alny and Newcastle, and, um, probably Indiana come in the morning. But with the homeschools and private schools and stuff like that, we let them have all day, because those kiddos are awesome. Um, they ask the right questions, they get in their groups, they go through that, so, um, with those, I cater through, um, I cater to those guys, uh, and we let them stay all day. We do much with them. With this event also, the, um, uh, troop two, in Wichita Falls, proposed last year that they do their coven palette for while we're having this going on, that'll bring two hundred scouts out there where they teach archery and stuff like that. Um, and, uh, that's kind of a big deal to be able to, put them to ask if they can do it for us, so, they're gonna come out, they also help us with, um, taking trash out and, um, just making sure things cleaned up, they help with parking, kind of work as tour guides. Um, they usually have a couple golf carts there for forest season systems to drive them around if they need, so they don't have a lot of bullfils, so, um, that's a, it's a great, great opportunity for us. They're gonna provide, Fort Apache's force this year, the, the boy scouts are, um, and then there are also their T-shirts, T-shirts, so, um, and then as far as, um, kind of building wise, structure wise, um, Monty Johnson is gonna get started on our, um, new display cases. Um, they, we had twenty-eight thousand, um, and we wanna have uniform cases throughout there. One of the things is to lighten it up, a lot of these cases go all the way to the ground, tabletop pieces go all the way to the ground. If you have it open underneath, it's easier to clean, um, and it makes it look more open. But we're gonna put a floor plan in with these new cases. My idea for the cases is to have them mostly see-through glass with less wood structure, because we want the focus to be on the artifacts and stuff we have in the museum than on the actual case itself. He's getting started on those, and we'll have those done before, um, the week before the event, so we can have you at the event as a redo, and, um, stuff like that, so, um, and then going into winter, fall is busy, busy, busy for family reunions and events and stuff like that, and then, once we get into the winter, um, I'm gonna resume replacing and painting and all those window seals that need to be, uh, redone, and the doors and the window seals, must be endorsed on that actually. Um, backtracking a little bit, we took the cannons to Hutter Hill, um, to start the race up there, and this was the best outing, um, that we've had with those cannons, a lot of attention on the cannons, and, um, we took one restored, the order that we took it up there, um, and it did just as good as the big one. The commanders, when they shot them off simultaneously, it was just one boom, I actually didn't think a little one went off until I saw them high-fiving each other, so, that's when I realized that both of them went off, so, um, a lot of compliments, um, a lot of appreciation, a lot of spotlight on Fort Griffin, so, um, it depends on, on, yeah, for that. I am doing, just on our Facebook page, if you just wanna know what's happened during the week, every Saturday evening, I'm putting up a post of what's happened during the week, but I'm writing it like a soldier in the eighteen fifties, um, explaining these things, so, like a soldier in eighteen fifties, trying to explain what a bicycle is, it's just, man, it is a, is a, the most unusual horse you've ever seen, the smallest, uncomfortable saddle and stuff like that, so, um, if you just wanna check out what we're doing during the week, that's an opportunity to do that, my head is a separate, but it's, it's there, so, anyway. Any questions, really?
October twenty-third.
October twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, um, and we do have, I don't know if y'all, if, if y'all were out there last year, um, our mountain men group, um, that's Buddy Bogman, who makes knives and, uh, rifles, he's got a couple of, of his buddies that are coming to put up a buck Skinner camp, and then the Apache Indians that were there with their TVs are gonna be back. The Apache Indians actually asked, they wanna, they love the fort so much, they went to camp all week. I have a problem with them doing that, because a TV at the fort looks really good, so, um, they went to camp all week, and, um, they're a great company to have out there anyway, so, um, but yeah, it's October twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, um. I'm still working on Woodson to come for that event, Woodson is always committed to Fort Griffin, which is two weeks before us, maybe that's an easier drive for you. Um, but Bryanston is kind of, uh, the one I'm trying to reach, and if I can roll into Fort Richardson, we'll have a full, we'll have a full fort for, when it comes to students out there, so, anyway.
We're gonna find the proper fort. We need to put up a harbor now, or place?
Yeah, we'll, we got it on sound.
We got it on sound.
Jim, I want to say this, too, about refurbishing the historical markers, is...
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 uh, I'm...
Only give those folks an accolade for doing what they did.
Uh, Young County Historical, well, they have been working on that, the Young County Historical Commission, finding some of these historical markers and refurbishing them, um, painting them to get the black to stand out, where, you know, when they get faded, it's sort of hard to read, um, I have, have wanted to do that to the two that we've got out there at the fort for a while, and, um, when I talked with Susan, I told her, I said, "I'm gonna redo these," and she said, "Let us come out there and help you," and so, it just worked out. Whenever we got back from, uh, Hutter Hill, Saturday morning, we started doing those, we re-read the domes, and, and they look brand, and, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a simple process to get them cleaned up, and, um, the only expense is the paint, so, um, we got those two redone, they do, they look brand, they look, they're just lit, and, so, um, I, I appreciate them coming out and doing that, if you put this level on there, too, so...
The other thing that I have in the packet is Young County Public History, I was supposed to carry on our budget. They'll hold that on September the twelfth, twenty-nineteenth, at eight thirty a.m., there at the, uh, cab conference room, seven twenty-four old street, just notice that it's in all the, um, vaccine entities, and supposed to be publics in also. Is there anything else, uh, on that? All action, uh, hopefully.
Well, let me miss an opportunity to remind you of the Young County serving our service benefit, September twenty-eighth, HDH will be east of Alny, Jay Cooker Dance following the luncheon at, at noon, so, uh, we'd love to have every one of you there, and, uh, if you can't, can't make it, go out and put some money in the bottle for the first responders.
I do have several posters that you need to...
That's good. So, just don't forget to mention to your friends and family and what have you, so, it's gonna be a good time for a great cause.
I'll like it. Also, I have tickets, Big Bagels has tickets to the lunch, or to the dance.
Sure, thanks. And thank you for doing that.
Tickets, please.
Tickets. It's on the poster, I make ten dollars for the lunch, and the dance tickets are forty dollars, a couple are twenty-five, I see.
Okay. Out of number four, consider county clerk to manage the previous payment, it was nineteen twenty nineteen, or their payment, the dollar, correct? So, uh, hey. I have multiple missions, while the second commission for Rogers to approve those minutes as presented on the side of, um... Out of number five, we consider a correct financial report, what takes on serious spending today?
I have July, uh, books on balance, um, is good, we have nine million three hundred forty-one thousand nine hundred thirteen dollars, that's the general budget. And then, um, in the special, uh, we have six hundred sixty-one thousand four hundred... I think it's a bunch of trouble, yeah.
All one?
No, probably not one.
So, what do you think? So, I say, most of the question, while, I'm sorry, I meant, while, I'm, uh, on the, on the, on the financial board, all part, um, for, uh, consider all of your pledged animals, about this place.
I have vouchers, handles, always have vouchers, yes. Total is seventy-nine thousand three forty-one seventy-one, and out of the general is twenty-six thousand three ninety-seven eighty-one.
So, we will run. Motion of the commission for while, we consider the commission for Rogers to approve the files, file, change it to our auditor, all papers, so, very, uh... I discuss, consider saying sheriff's constable, sheriff's and constable state, we had this way, on our last agenda, so, we'll look into it a little bit further, uh, add statute that provides for it, I don't believe that there's a cap, it just, there's a limitation, the commissioners' court may not set the fees higher than is necessary by the expenses of providing the service. I believe we increased some of these things last year. Eighteen dollars, I'm not sure if it's in, would you? So... I would give this to, up to the court, to, to clarify whether the legal adequate, or whether any of them may be in the grade store. These grades not, uh, that, that, that...
Are we receiving adequate amounts for the service that we provide?
I believe so, I mean, I think so.
It's in line with all of it.
I think it's judge, everything good in court, but the fact that you, you're never happy with any of them?
No, I would, I think, I think this is good.
The levels are good, so we've touched all the bases, so it sounds all good. I believe we maintain the same fee schedule, I'm sure it's good.
Out of filing, types on motion, there are types on motion, there's a filing on second to maintain the fee schedule as presented, and the same rates as, uh, previous, as our previous year, all in favor? I hope. Out of number eight, we'll discuss, consider, make society compact, supporting that group of...
Oh, this is, this is...
Absolutely, that, that, come on up.
This is a, uh, which I thought, this is our policy, we have...
I'm not, I'm not, I don't think it's, thank you.
Yes, B-R-O-G-B-O-N, one sheet short on our...
You're short.
On the, uh...
Motion for permission for Rogers to approve the matter, file, change our order, all files. I discuss, Consider Sag Sheriff's Hospital, Sheriff's and Constable State, we had this late, on our last agenda, so we'll look into it a little bit further, add the statute that provides for it. I don't believe that there's a cap, it just, there's a limitation, the Commissioner's Court may not set the fees higher than is necessary by the expenses of providing the service. I believe we increased some of these things last year. Up to the fourth position. Do you require what the lead draft was, or whether any of them may be in the grade store? These grades not out, that's a good plan.
Are we receiving adequate amounts for the service that we provide?
I believe so, I mean, I think so.
It's in line with all of it.
I think it's judge, everything good in court, but the fact that you, you're never active with any of them.
No, I would, I think, I think this is good.
The levels are good, so we've touched all the bases, so it sounds all good. I believe we maintain the same fee schedule.
Out of filing, types on motion, there's types on motion, there's filing on second to maintain the fee schedule as presented, and the same rates as previous, as our previous year, all in favor. Out of number eight, if you can discuss, Consider Police Department, contact, supporting that.
This is a, which I apologize. This is our policy. I'm not, I'm not, I don't think it's, thank you.
Yes, B-R-O-G-B-O-N. She should, on our, on the, on the board, she posted on it, let her down, off that thing.
One for me, please, offering two months.
I've got a bunch of numbers. Okay, what?
That's not very powerful.
Did you?
I didn't, I didn't.
I know, I've had enough. I have to put it all together.
Where's your?
The director, Paul Lawrence. He was, he was, that'd be wasted.
Congratulations.
We had requested to prepare report with your numbers, October 1st, 2018, to the current, which was August 21st, the Young County and New Castle, and it was segregated out, City Ground, City Albany. So, basically, what we did, we've got the B home in Young County and Newcastle, the unincorporated areas, plus Newcastle, and C is City Ground, D is Albany, E is the other county and areas that we intake from the public. And then, broken down into our dog intakes and outcomes, cat intakes and outcomes, horses, chickens, and pigs, which is what we've taken in, in that time frame.
We had chickens.
Yeah, we had a county cruelty case that got four horses, five chickens, I think 30-plus cats, and four dogs, or something like that. So, our dog intakes were the unincorporated counties, plus Newcastle's 213 in that time period, 188 cat intake in that time, and then the four horses and the five chickens. City of Ground, 382, four dog intakes, 226 for cat intakes, and of course, we've got animal control, we have to bring it in there, too, so I'm sure that helps increase that number.
Animal control from the city bringing it in?
Yes, so I'm sure the county numbers will be up from that if we had county animal control.
They're bringing it in from the county?
Uh, county, animal control officer.
She goes, that's not.
Oh, from county, sorry, from the county, it's the public, just the public drop off. We do not have a county animal control to go out and pick up, so it's, when we get a call, we're just basically have to tell them to bring them in themselves.
Well, when you have called number 10, was that still in care?
Uh, still housed at the shelter at this time, at the time of this report.
Oh, why?
So, we still have seven of the Young County Newcastle log, seven City Ground. I think our current numbers housed at them, I can say at the moment, as of August 21st, are 81 cats and 31 dogs currently in care as of that date.
Have you got running water, or is it full?
Uh, we are basically at capacity, I think as of this morning, there were two kennels free, I would fully expect those to fill up today. Our cats are overflowing. I think we've got close to the number of cats in our care currently, as we placed in the year last year.
Is there no way, is there no way that we can use those cats for agricultural industrial purposes, barn cats?
We do send out.
Without going through all the?
We do, we do send out barn cats. The cats that come into us farrow, we have been sending to Wichita Falls on the trap new release program. It costs the public $10 per cat, that gives them a rabies shot, and a spay or neuter, and then they're turned back out. We have the public actually bringing those in and signing them up, and we send them back home with them. Our animal control officer brings them farrows when it's feasible, meaning if they come in, we estimate the drive to Wichita Falls does this, so if it's on or close to a day that she can drive, and we can easily hold them for that. If they come in on a Thursday, the clinic we work with doesn't do Friday appointments, so they've got Saturday, Sunday, it might be Monday before we can send them up, we can't always have a cat sitting in a trap for that amount of time. In that case, we have to euthanize, but we do turn back what we can.
But, that's my relationship, you have with Wichita Falls.
Wichita Falls clinic is the clinic that comes to us two to three times per month, provides baby neuter services at our facility, they do a low-cost vaccination clinic as well, they're coming in the first and the third Wednesdays of each month. I think Booby just canceled their transport program, that comes to Booby, picks up and takes back, so they've also added us on the fourth Wednesday to actually drive their van down, pick up our community's pets, Wichita picks them, bring them back. Our board president volunteers with pets, so she is the one who drives down, usually on Mondays, picks up anywhere from 5:00 to 7:00 to four cats on a Monday evening, because the public drives into Wichita Falls, there's spay or neuter on Tuesday, she drives them back down on Tuesday evening, to call down, or so come people back up, I say down, or seats are usually farrow, three roaming, I guess they're always farrow, three roaming cats.
Can you all do that for all of them?
Not for the same class, they're tardies.
Do you do that for everybody?
Yes.
Okay, so you've got the 501(c)(3) on topic, just competing with private, that rounds?
Yeah, they had like a whole hearing on that just recently, I know it went to Austin, and I know they tabled that, they had a whole hearing in Austin on the 501(c)(3) vets with the public vets.
Well?
I mean, and the TNR program, we're only able to utilize that as long as they have a grant, and I know the grant is getting low, and once that grant's out, we're looking at euthanizing pretty much all those cats that come in that way. I mean, I have people calling all the time with numbers of cats, and I don't have answers for them. They don't want to hear that we're gonna put them down, but I don't know what.
Again, they can't just be released to someone who's deemed them for rodent control.
I have a limited number of people who take them, and we normally don't want to turn them back out, not spay or neuter, because then we turn up with people, I mean, we've got somebody in the county right now that's got 30-plus cats, and we're getting calls on them, because they say they threw out a couple of food, they don't have running water in their home, they're not watering the cats, so if we're tossing them back out, not spay or neuter, then we drop these coming back in, here's 30, 60 cats, and we need you to take them today, well, then I have to tell them again, you can bring them in, we're gonna euthanize them. No, 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 we don't want to do that. I don't know what the answer is.
Would you get more reverse program when people knew that they could come in?
Uh, we.
Say the limited number.
Yeah, I mean, we've.
Six, eight, 10, and nine.
Yeah, I mean, we have a few numbers on file to call when we have those coming in.
Yeah, 'cause I'm at the extension office, we're having it all the time, when they get barn cats.
Yeah, send them my way.
Well, I've got, I've got barn cats, very dear past, it's been a long time.
Yeah, they're a non-chemical way of taking care of rodents, you know, with the environment they live in, for the danger, for sure.
Right, and we do have a certain population of cats that we won't send out as barn cats. You know, we've had those cats that came in as kittens that have been in our care since they were four weeks old, we're not gonna, yeah, we're not gonna put them outside, they're gonna get kicked off, and we have people that turn their house cats in, and we're not gonna send those out, there's no survival skills there, but those cats that are used to be outside, the ones that go in for the TNR program actually get irritated, and then advise that they've been spayed or neutered and vaccinated, so those, we have some of those in the shelter right now, and we have somebody coming in looking for outdoor cats, we send them to those cats. And through the shelters, we actually add every cat in our facility, no charge, fully vetted, no charge, we place two cats. We had a, I guess the majority of our dogs that are here sponsored, their vet care was paid for, we're bought people donating, and we place five, so they get no, no fees to pay for, fully vetted, so. I think our market for dogs and cats is pretty saturated around here, I have people bringing out litters and puppies, saying, "I tried to give them away, nobody will take them." And we usually don't have a lot of, we'll place at puppies, 'cause people want puppies, people aren't adopted puppies right now either, so.
Yeah, my problem with going east of that road, is that we all, almost as many nothing on the road.
Right.
Every year.
Well, and the cats were coming in, how many did we take in that one day? That one?
Thirty.
Thirty-something cats in one day, and a lot of those, like, we were getting nursing kidding, kittens brought in, and, I mean, we've got eighty cats in care, where do we go with them? They're stacked in cages, trying to dole out, so, I mean, it's just a, it's a constant, it's a constant problem.
Is that not a euthanasia situation?
Yeah. It is, and we'll get crucified for that, but it's.
I mean, managing these pet populations sometimes is below the cool side.
The only answer is spay or neuter, and, I mean, that's all you can do, is, is put it back to, if you're, if you're not taking care of what's in your community.
I hope it's for spaying and neutering, 95% of the cats you're showing to your pockets and cans.
Service the building, that there, provide, though, wish, open to anybody, everybody's not disqualified in.
It is open to anybody and everybody, they have a grant for specifically those who can provide proof of government assistance, although that grant just ran out, so.
You play that $10 charge.
The $10 charge is, the $10 charge for the spay or neuter and the vaccinations is the farrow cat program, there's a PetSmart grant that covers that. They have another grant that's for the low-income families, that covers, and the surgery is 10, and then they also have to pay 10 for rabies shots, because rabies shots are part of the care, but that program, that grant just ran out, so.
What did they, what, charge, charge, five or maybe?
On that, it was 10 plus the 10 for rabies.
So, if I brought my dog, if I brought my dog?
Just generally, just generally, the spay and neuter for dogs is 55, the spay for cats is 40, the neuter for cats is 30.
They will, local maps, uh, do that?
Uh, no, they, there's been a couple that have lowered their calls, I know Albany's offering, if you have a cat spayed there, they will spay a feral for, I think for free, so they're trying to offer something for the farrow cats.
But I'm just gonna bring my dog in to get a spay and shots into the day?
It would be 55 for the spay, it would be 10 for rabies shot, it would be 25 for a full set of vaccinations plus rabies.
So, somebody tends to get farrow cats for use of their barn, do it cost $120 a dozen?
10.
10 fees?
I was waiting, all of those things, waiting, what, I'm, I'm considering, probably there, governmental grant, planning 501(c)(3), or maybe other grants, 501(c)(40), and that is a, is practically.
But they don't provide any vet care other than preventative, they do the spay or neuter, they do the vaccinations, they do heart monitor testing. They also ask you to have a working relationship with a local veterinarian, if there are any complications, anything that needs to come about from the surgeries they provide, they have a working relationship with Dr. Burnham here in town, they refer out to Dr. Burnham if they need antibiotics, any kind of restitching from surgery, anything like that, and same thing in Wichita Falls, they have a vet, they refer out to, and they have a sign in their office, you know, you need a regular vet to go regular vet visits, and they tell you they're recommended. But what we're running into is, most of the people who utilize our clinics, it's not that they're pulling away from a vet in town, it's that they aren't getting it otherwise. They're, they're using the low cost, or they're not getting it at all, because I have a lot of people that say, you know, "I can't afford that," when I say I can get it for 10 or 20 dollars, some of them are even like, "Can I pay part of it now, part of it later?" Some of them say, "Can we get the surgery done, and I'll pay you Monday?" But, I, I'm looking at it right now, I'm having to go in and call everyone and tell them that that grant ran out, so I suspect that we will have a lot of agreements at our clinic, because there are people who can't afford to pay that $55.
That's why, for the, for the income, for the, we are obviously, that's a great program for the, their financial challenges, and would do it otherwise.
Yeah.
Couldn't, uh, uh, I've kind of, this idea, locally, I've said, all of those, our services, that, that, the prices.
There, I know they had some, some specials, I don't know if they've done it on a continuing basis or not, I know that they did all for some, I think there was a complaint that they were sending paint vans out with them, and pigs are for paint vans, but that's just what I've heard, I don't know.
Do you, uh, do you have anything to?
We, we have two kennels that are set up as a quarantine, we have used them for bike quarantine, I think they're on that, too, six for the county and Newcastle, three for City of Ground, and one for City of Albany, and one outside of the, outside of the area.
You going to have any shelters that have been, or, or?
Uh, we have a van.
This van that you were talking about, or is it?
Uh, we have, we have a shelter van, yes.
Well, what, what other you can ask for, like, if we had a dog by a county road?
My problem with that is not having staff that's qualified to go out and pick up, or staff that's qualified to handle bike quarantine dogs. When Holly was on staff, Holly was an animal control officer prior to being director, and we no longer have an animal control officer on staff, so there's no one who is trained to go out in the county and pick up, and there's no one who is vaccinated for the pre-vax.
Is that animal being transported in their van under the guidance of one of our law enforcement?
Go something, have a little bomb.
Okay, that's the question now.
I'm sorry. Okay. I'm going to just, or, and, oh.
Sorry, ask the question?
I have, I have a fine, small, like, or, I'm not, thank you, for, for, who is willing, willing to do that, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that he should do that without any compensation, but he's willing to do that, and he's qualified to do that. We, this court years ago, have, has adopted 826, there are probably 826 up here, built, built, like, we previously adopted that chapter, and we've also waived that, 75,000, or less than 75,000, so we've waived that, all that training, rules that are required for, uh, those, and go on, above that, 75,000, on placement, right, so, we've done that to the best, probably need to do that again, because it's gonna be years in the back records, we'd have to go back and look, look, uh, mind, though, for him, for just exactly what year we did that, and it's, might make great share, I don't know.
If we did something like that, would you have a confident key to the shelter, in there for quarantine, notify you guys, or whatever?
No, our city officers and city animals, all of the G A code, and there are three outside intake kennels that are set up, and there's a bin outside that keeps bowls and food and blankets that go in those kennels when they're brought in, and then there's a folder similar to this, and there would be paperwork in it to fill out for after hours. Yeah, I mean, they're basically, basically the city's already doing that, the officer would bring them in, and animal control officer brings them in after hours.
What's the process or time frame to get one test, once it's brought in, what do you have to?
It's a 10-day hold.
A county intake hold, okay, I'll just, see, those are involved.
There is no test, other than decapitation, certainly head off, that's the only test there is, so, you know, if the owner.
Yeah, it's a 10-day, uh, just a hold.
Yeah, and there's a, there's a form where you do a check twice a day, to see if there's any, there's a, it's a whole list of things that you check off if there's any changes.
So, once they bring you that animal, it goes into a cage, and it stays in that cage, you know?
No, it's an indoor outdoor kennel, the way it was altered to be compliant, we're quarantined as plexiglass, put in at the very top of the kennels, 'cause the walls are solid anyway, but at the top, there was a steel with the bars, they went in with plexiglass over that, so that there's no, they can't, those, those even up over the top, and then there's a top on those two kennels, where they can't get out of the top of them.
and there are three outside intake kennels that are set up. And there's a bin outside that keeps bowls and food and blankets that go in those kennels when they're brought in. And then there's a folder similar to this, and there were paperwork in it to fill out for after hours. Yeah, I mean, they're basically, the, basically the city's already doing that. The officer would bring them in and animal control also brings them in after hours.
What's the process or time frame to get one test? Once it's brought in, what do you have to?
It's a ten day hold.
A county, they have a, they have a, you see. Those are involved.
There is no test other than decapitation, certainly not off, that's the only test there is, so, um, you know, if the owner.
Yeah, it's a ten day operation.
Yeah, and there's a, there's a form where you do a check twice a day to see if there's any, there's a, it's a whole list of things that you check off if there's any changes.
So once they bring you that animal, it goes into a cage? And it stays in that cage all day?
No, it's an indoor outdoor kennel. Uh, that way it was altered to be compliant for quarantine as, uh, plexiglass put in at the very top of the kennels, because the walls are solid anyway. Uh, but at the top, there was a, kind of steel with the bars. They went in, they put plexiglass over that so that there's no, they can't nose even up over the top. And then there's a top on those two kennels where they can't get out of the top of them.
So quarantine doesn't mean quarantine? Doesn't indeed mean quarantine.
Yes, and.
I think for observation, for sign, rabies. I actually, that's on the way to do that, like a hat dog by it, whatever, frame, frame.
And then it's the responsibility of the owner to pay that ten day fee if they want their dog back?
Yeah.
And I guess a rabies vaccination too. If they rabies shot.
One year, four, do you get their account for the?
In the case of.
They get it back.
Like, in the case of stray, then it goes back to, like, the city or county, they have to pay, go back, go back to warranty. If you're quarantine or send off. Uh, I think our fee is one fifty for the ten day.
And then how much is it to, uh, let's say that we were paying for it, it was a stray and we had to have its decapitation and rabies check?
I think it is similar in costs. I would have to double check, I know the shipping fee is outrageous.
I'm sure.
Uh, yeah, because that's, uh, not.
Right.
Being a, yeah, I would have to double check that, though. I personally have not done that, that was, uh, Holly and, you know, that was qualified to do that. So I think basically if you wanted that, uh, from the county out, it's possible to have just have to vet to do that decapitation.
I, I would have to take one, I took it to, uh, Jack's World, make sure it's been a hundred and forty-five dollars.
That loan, one of the first.
One of them.
Five, yeah. Really? That's right, you did it.
That's just the further, it is the ten day observation, that's all it was. I, I watched it, then, I took him, I took him live over there, they kept him, they, they, they took him. They euthanized him.
Right, then they kill it?
Yeah.
You have to check.
Yeah, like, cleaning board, they were sending off.
I remember. Sorry.
So, do you feel, have any objection of Holly got quarantine animal on the kennel?
I know that our board was discussing trying to get out of recording quarantine dogs, uh, because we don't have staff that is qualified to handle a quarantine dog. And also because it takes up two kennels of dogs that we can help for adoption or trade or for support. Uh, with one new kennel space, it, it takes up two spaces for ten days. So, I mean, that would probably be a question to draw back to our board.
I think, I think our, our question there is that we're supporting the humane society through our contribution to you on an annual basis. And we've got needs that you could meet for us. We're just trying to get something for what we give. You know, we need, we need some help and, you know, we got as long as I can help.
Right.
And if you don't agree, I'm gonna say, no, we can't help you, then. You know, other than that, we're just funding a, an adoption agency.
Is it, is it costing, would it cost you guys more to go to a vet to do that board?
You wanna, does, does she know about your story?
Listen, I'm not, I'm not for sure how much it's gonna cost to go to vet. Our problem that we're having is, one, probably we can get started, I mean, we really need the animal shelter, whatever.
But I think what they're trying to ask you is this, in my situation, we had a dog last week that had, uh, been a kid. We had to try to find a place to put the dog because everybody in the immediate area, you couldn't ever, we couldn't either get ahold of them or they didn't have a, they didn't have a cage for them. So, uh, we called Live, they, they took you over to Live. Uh, the other problem is that we were having, is by law, we can't transport an animal in the same vehicle that we transport, uh, inmates because of diseases or whatever. So there, there's our dilemma. We had to, we finally got ahold of the animal control lady in Almy who came and picked them up on that Sunday, I believe, and took them over to Live. So that's, that's the dilemma that we're in as far as in the county. You know, back when Holly was here, that was, that was good, she could come pick them up. Now we're trying to figure out how we're going to pick up the animals and where we're gonna house them at. The idea was hoping that we could find either through y'all or through a local vet that will keep a certain cage open for us for quarantine animals.
Because it's not that big anywhere in the traffic.
Well, there's been more.
That's another contribution.
There's been more, that's obvious, there's been more this year than normal, popular weather, yeah.
Some year, some year.
But that's a dilemma where transportation and housing.
But anyway, I think the sheriff's problem with that, uh, mandate to, on an aggressive dog that attacks and bites, I think, I think he's supposed to, by law, seize that dog.
Yeah.
Uh, our problem is.
Can we transport it wherever we could?
Yeah, we can seize him all day long, he's just transporting everywhere.
Well, that's what we have, it hasn't been a big problem, it's rare to say it was, well. I don't think the county has actually ever had a, a pro officer, that's been pointed out in court. Uh, duty just been, by default, sheriff of the county, you know, and. It worked pretty good for a while, times changed, circumstances changed, laws changed, supply changes, so. We're coming more of an issue right now of entertaining that conversation with our M C. He's, uh, he, these ten bits, we're well paid of, all the things, he's just gonna. Sort of mental salary of the M C. He said he very willing to do that. If, or showed his medical appointment to do that. Probably about as qualified as anybody, uh, really, without.
He's still gonna have a method of transportation in place for him to do.
Have a little bit of equipment. Obviously, he's got a pickup vehicle, all that, and will throw bar or cage to be. And I'm talking about a dual animal tag, if you're vaccinated. If it's set back, pick up one thing, or he actually needs a vehicle for his M C, he's, that's. He's gonna, he gonna be a lot more active than any other that would pass, anybody would pass you. He's gonna lose the track, he's gonna lose things that, we have a half that we've needed for a time, and it's a two. But, you know, wouldn't use his own vehicle for the time being, anyway.
Yeah, I, I would, I, of course, see, our, our biggest problem right now is gonna be housing. I think we can figure out the other issues. The housing part's what's gonna be an issue. It's just a dog, you'll maybe just slap it right off the table, but all it costs us is just to build a place right there for the dogs, or animals.
That's another thing for the.
I mean, can we build a cage or facility where we can get into it? If only, if only our quarantine dog.
Don't you say, did you, had three?
Two.
Two.
Yes, you could probably fill up today with, uh.
Cats.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, they stay full, they're not, they're not totally dedicated.
There's no guarantee that you'll have anything available for quarantine.
And they're not empty, you wait around for a quarantine dog.
Right, I mean, they're always full, I mean, that is.
Something, you know, to quarantine animals.
I mean, that would just, if we're like required to bring one in and board it, then it would just require us to pull one out.
We need reserves about twenty-four seven.
And be empty ready for us to move them. And I don't know if that's an option that we can use part of our property out there to build one?
I mean, I can't answer that, but it's something we could, yeah, we could, something we could discuss, definitely.
Definitely, might bring it up.
Mr. Honeywell?
Yes.
What do you have to say about this?
Uh, well, I expect we've tailored this issue to such a time as the board can review it and make recommendations.
You got an understanding of our needs?
Uh, quote-unquote, we understand. I'm also looking at the fact that probably, as the sheriff says, it would probably be more convenient to have it on his property than ours because of the fact that they can get to and from it.
Yeah, but, uh, every, well, that same problem, though, with my guys.
You're not, well, they're not.
Watching them, being them, taking care of them.
You would be asked to be responsible for the.
Why, why could he use this, you got the name of the city, go out to your sheriff's office and watch it every day?
And get it certified on that part.
I mean, as far as certified, I'm not certified, but I have, I mean, you know.
Be the owner.
Just move that one person. He goes on vacation or whatever, I'm just saying, what if, no use, or one update?
Huh?
Um, I'm, I'm calling around the day and talk to the vets and see what they say.
I don't know, Burnham has a facility to quarantine, he doesn't have a lot of, uh, space to hold. Uh, countryside, might be more, you might.
You might, what, what'd you say?
Countryside might, I love my, uh, Dry Creek, probably with, uh, but I'm not sure about that, but I very probably have a facility to, to quarantine. I mean, you can check with him, but I know one time the city was following, uh, when the city was taking dogs there for a short time, several hundred dogs, of course kennels. So, I don't know that they have a, an amount. Yeah, no, kennels.
So far as the shelter's concerned, the more, the more kennels you have, the more animals you have to take care of. You just keep filling up cages.
Yeah.
So there's no way to reduce the animals by one cage, roughly, one of those quarantine cages, open and available twenty-four seven?
We just have to achieve a lot to do away with, basically.
How often do you think? Uh, how many, how many have we? Oh, I had, for the, the.
Uh, I did write that down, uh, there are twenty-four dog kennels. Uh, we, we don't double those up unless we have puppies, which right now we have a mom and puppies in one kennel, so there's four dogs in that kennel. Uh, we have a couple of litter kennels, so we, we have littermates, they go in the kennel together, but, but twenty-four dog kennels. And I can't say the number of cat kennels we have, but we have our two cat rooms that are a cat quarantine.
Is there, is there cats in that? Not necessarily that they're quarantined, but are there cats in that quarantine all the time?
Yes. Yeah, usually, once we have adoption in one of our cat rooms, we move a cat up from quarantine into adoption.
But if you have a cat that's come, got, you make quarantine, then you guys just.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Did I actually make that? Few more things.
Yeah, I mean, we, and we do have quarantine in there because we have so many kittens coming in with U R I's. And, uh, then we have had, we're, we're seeing influx again, but in spring, uh, we had so many people bringing those kittens who aren't supposed to be away from mom yet. Uh, so, we're talking, you know, three, four weeks of kittens that we've got in there, those are all in quarantine, so they can go up for adoption, so. All of them are held in there.
Maybe we'll see that, will you adopt a rescue?
Adopted is, uh, someone from the public coming in, filling out application, and adopting a dog rescue. Uh, they pull dogs into a program that go up for adoption in their program. So, like, our rescue dogs, when they get pulled, they go to a rescue, they get their bedding, all through that rescue, they find their home through that rescue. If we didn't have rescue, our euthanasia number should be through the roof.
Do you, do you sell, do you know?
Yes.
Do, do they not have, do they have?
They have a very shoddy facility, they have, they have, uh, I can't remember how many pens it is. Uh, they are ten over the top, ten on two sides in the back, and open to the west.
Yes, it is, how much is she along, do you need today?
Uh, I would have to look that up for you, they pay for dog and for cat, whatever comes in.
So they only pay what brings, what you bring.
What they bring in, yes.
Pay it, whatever.
Yeah, we bill them monthly for what comes in.
Do you castle, you build a castle?
No.
We learn, we learn all, do you charge anybody?
I don't, I don't believe, we don't have any, any castles, not, I don't think so.
So literally, you don't know our.
I think so.
Government, yes. So, just one day.
Yeah.
Don't have that. Uh, I have no questions, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, uh, at least seventy-four point something percent of our operations are all donations.
How, how much does that seem, we, how much of it is, uh, government, city, county, city, government?
Um, okay, county provides eleven percent of our yearly operation budget, city provides fifteen point five percent of our, uh, yearly operating budget. Uh, so, I got seventy-six ish percent on community donations. And I'll, this is right now, as far as, that is a community.
Your operating budget is what?
Uh, two oh five, no, two hundred, two hundred five thousand per year operating budget.
The city grant, don't charge y'all any money for water or sewer?
Right, and garbage pick up.
Garbage pick up.
Right.
Especially y'all, you got over here in St. Christie and, and, and.
Yeah, bedding and, I don't know, deals for.
Well.
But our, our electric system.
Twenty-six percent of government, all the, 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 that's seventy-four percent.
Actually, it's close.
Do you grant chapter you know of?
Uh, we have qualified for grants in the past, I know we've got one, uh, but the form work that's out there, uh, needed to follow up on, so our current board is, is following up on that one, submitting a final report. Uh, but I know our board currently is looking at grants, so, uh, some of those I do think help operating costs, some of them are just, you know, specific to certain needs, but.
You're there to build that money on?
Right, some of them, yeah, and buildings and equipment or whatever, but yeah, there are some out there that we, if we look into.
Is that a person crediting?
Yes.
Does that qualify anything to you, or?
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
What is part of, rather, the liability?
Uh, she's, she's applying for vet school, but she has, uh, several classes she has to get out of like hers, so she can't go anywhere credibly.
About thirty-five class, credit.
Yes. Yes.
Heather Allen, right there.
Heather, you got anything you wanna say? Good, good, good. Jake.
No.
Jake.
There doesn't, uh, there's. Cats are funny, yes, yeah.
Grab the sheet, we're talking.
Yes.
You think they'll bring a pig in here?
It's a pretty long one.
What kind of pig, wild or domestic?
Actually, we did have a pig there.
Just one.
Man rabbits too, but it was right outside of this reporting.
Oh. Almost ended up with a tortoise, I believe.
That's what I thought.
That's a new doctor's down, so.
You never know what's gonna walk in, we had a dirty one, hamster, and.
How do you get chickens?
We had a bear.
I'll take some chickens.
He goes into that.
Did they? You took some chickens?
She, she's taking adoption, so she can, yeah.
Well, I appreciate you guys.
I appreciate it.
I appreciate, it's just a tough formula to make, of course.
Yeah, it's, it's tough all the way around, uh, even staffing, it's hard to keep a good staff. After what we pay, and it's, it's got that emotional, physical balance, it's, it's not pleasant, it's emotionally hard, it's dirty, it's, I mean, it's, it's hard all the way around. You have to love them, you have to let them go.
Nobody wants to save an animal, nobody wants to do the work to do it.
Yeah, you have to, you have to love them to do it, but then you have to be able to let them go, too, so. It's, it's tough.
Thank you for what you did.
Thank you, thanks for, for hearing us.
I will say that, can I?
I will say that, can I, can I?
Sure.
The rescue program, if we can have, if people would, more people would volunteer to foster for the rescue program, I don't know, I mean, I know that none of y'all pretty interested, but. Say for instance, I've been fostering since October and I've fostered thirty-six dogs already. So, and all of those dogs, I have them maybe two weeks to a month max. I've had two for about three months that they were heartworm positive. We do the heartworm pro, you know, treatment and then get them well and they go and get adopted. So, I mean, I haven't been doing it very long, but I've become very passionate about it. I currently have two foster kittens that are, I've been bottle feeding since one was two days old. The other one was four days old. Uh, Jalen Quatton has eleven kittens that she's been bottle feeding. So, we're currently trying to get them adopted through the shelter. So, we're doing the best, I mean, they're doing the best that they can and we're doing the best that we can to help them out. I wish the youth age rate wasn't so high, but what are they supposed to do with the lack of space? You know?
Foster, y'all foster.
The fostering is at our homes. So I have my zoo on top of fosters.
So we just said our number one hundred.
So, I mean, there's just a little tidbit. And I'm a single mom with three kids and did all by myself and I still, there's no excuses.
Schools, if we're gonna give my.
Do what?
Take them off the schools.
I just wish that there was more community involvement. You know, lots of people wanna drop and complain on Facebook and, and it's very hard for me not to comment because that's not who I am. And I'm also affiliated with the, the shelter now, so it's, it's very, it's not professional, but.
Yes.
I just got a text message from one of my deputies, just to, he said that he just got a call of three abandoned dogs on Lord Tom Carrow.
Doctor Heather Allen.
What do you do?
What, 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 what do we do with those three dogs?
You bring them in.
Yeah.
How?
Well, I mean, like when they call us, I tell them we do not have a county pickup, but you are welcome to bring them in. We do not turn away, we're an open intake. So we'll take them, but I don't have anybody that can come pick them up. That's what I tell them.
If you had a pickup, could you provide twenty-four seven transportation?
At the shelter? I, I can barely employ people nine to five.
I know the.
And, and personally, I usually get one, maybe two days off a week, I mean, a, a, not a week, a month. And those two days, I'm still answering correspondence for the shelter. So as far as me doing it, I have no hours left in the day.
I've picked up a few and taken to the shelter.
Have you?
It was a call that came in.
You know where Lord Tom Carrow is?
I don't know, I don't know my way around.
We can see them. What, you can't drop them, can't drop them. Why would you want, why would you want straight dogs running around your neighborhood?
Well, a couple won't run around with them.
Well, we're done with other, well. Pretty isolated.
Very young.
Guess nature take care of itself.
Yeah, after long enough, nature will take care of itself.
I don't know, Jill, I don't know what nature is.
What's, other than getting about the adoption, what, what are the requirements for adoption, adopting an animal?
Yeah, it, it's really case by case. I mean, we have an application that they fill in. We ask about fenced yards. Um, but fence, not having a fenced yard is not an automatic turn down. Um, you know, we're kinda looking at where they're located and, and what the dangers would be. Um, whether it's somebody that we can believe that will take it out on a leash if they're in the city. Um, our, our biggest thing that we look at is their uh, past pet history and their vet reference. Uh, seeing that their current pets have a current rabies shot, uh, just markers that, that tell us that that's gonna be a responsible home to put an animal in.
Is there a background check?
There, there, there is a, there is a vet reference check and uh, that usually will also tell us about past pets. Uh, and past pets aren't an automatic disqualifier either. People have changes in their lives and people learn and do better. Um, but we just try to go on what we have in front of us to try to make a good decision on a dog, but it's not gonna end up back out on the street calling everybody problems again.
Do people lose their interest in adoption if for so much this?
Uh, generally no. The ones who actually are interested in adoption, I mean, and, and we've actually had people praise us for having something in place to screen people. You know, I mean, we need to know somewhat, you know, something about where they're going, otherwise we're tossing them right back down into where they came from.
Right.
I adopted one about a year ago and one of the best dogs that ever happened alive.
That's a deal with lots of good dogs.
These dogs are gonna be the best animals you can get.
They really are.
They're way more grateful.
So sweet.
Well, like the one we had showed on the courthouse staff, that can't say. Well, I was gonna give the tag anyway.
That, know where that one is. That dog has a jackpot, it's a character.
Was fourteen, killing ten dogs while he had ever built a weekend?
She goes to work with Jason every day, so she hit the jackpot.
Yes, she did. Good for her.
Felicity. Yeah, my, my little co-recognizer.
That was sharing my assistant's that up there and she brought it here, but I don't know. I, I kinda went to do a little.
Chris, your uh, order director's gonna discuss these situations.
Needs to be taken, that's what we're here for.
I'm sorry, yeah.
I don't suppose that there's necessarily any action that needs to be taken at this time of this, but something that we might keep in mind. Have another discussion about that.
May I ask, may I address Chrissy?
Yes, you might.
Chris, y'all are gonna bring this up before your order directors?
Yes, uh, should we entertain looking in regard to a county uh, animal control officer?
Excuse me?
Should we look at perhaps finding someone or recommending someone for a county control officer, uh, animal control officer?
I, I look about that discussing with, uh, prospect.
Okay.
For animal control, animal, and even a rabies authority, if you will. So, y'all might discuss that either, uh, at whatever length you want to postpone. That, yeah, that's already been opened up for. I'm discussing that with individual land.
Okay.
Obviously, it's gotta be this court that does that.
Right. We were just looking at, we go, whatever we can, what assistance we can offer.
Yeah, I'm like what the court generally would, won't initially would be uh, opportunity to either have one of those cages dedicated or maybe even uh, supplying the funds for and outside the cage, I guess would for purposes whenever the county might need it. You know, whenever one of these animals they need quarantine, they, they need a quarantine facility that's available. Midnight, um. But it'll, it'll, it could be used. Some other entrance maybe, but the court, the court's only someplace where they can take an animal, be, be quarantined. To be looked after, I guess, in a thorough, regular.
May I say something? Uh, what you're referring to maybe is creating another employment position in the county? Yes. As an animal control officer? Yes. We're struggling with budgets and tax rates now. And believe me, if we hired another full-time position as some sort of enforcement officer, the first choice and need might not be there. If there's another way to solve the problem.
By means. Probably as the judge pointed out, it could just be court, a particular quarantine section would be our best bet. Maybe three or four cages, something like that, so.
But if we, if we had those funds to do that, I'd wanna be solely dedicated to the county as huge. I wouldn't wanna go out there at midnight and start moving that shit around.
Right.
I know it's hard to be a fast, you have to eat the cages there. But that may be what happens.
Yeah, it's, and one day they took in, how many dogs that one day?
Yeah, but what he's talking about.
Maybe two, two hundred and three.
But what he's talking about is that just a, hey, just for us, it might be handy for a month.
That's why the judge said, let's check with the parents and see if we can have other options through that. Very proud of my role.
Back to election on that, uh, first act of the report, Shelby.
Very good.
Very good. Now, like y'all, play in here first. Do it, uh, good discussion, do it before. Discussing, should have modified, modifying, off resolution, take it before. This is a, I'm looking for a question named from Wildgarden.
It's your. Jay Brewer called me, asked to uh, move their due date for their hot payment a week later in the month because of cash flow, receivables, accounts payable. Just to help them out before it to be a week later. I'm not sure what we'd do if they were a week late anyway, but they prefer to do things by, by.
Like during the first month or the next month?
Later in the month, just do, what day is the month, what day is the month that we need?
It's only within the twenty eighth.
And then I can have the first part of the next month?
In your package is the resolution that we adopted and uh, this sense with the notification letter to the. Selfish, if we give it time, essentially, it's a relevant, a whole lot, certainly, except, contributing from time to time. Majority comes from Wildgarden, but we have some also, um, two, three other sources. Uh, and this notification letter along with the farm, I don't think, the farm, I think, uh, it went, the farm also went and it says. Says to be remedied, uh, to be on county numbers later than the twentieth day of the month, next following, for the period. Uh, and I guess, a week later, we, Jimmy and I drew this up a little bit to say, modify that to say on August twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen. By on county district's court, we do a post committee, by minute order, modified such that it's day three, no later than the twenty-eighth day of the month, next following, for the quarter period. Just extended that week, if, if that's said five mornings, thus not any objections.
So that will actually be five weeks from the month that we're reporting them.
Yeah, I think, I think they were thinking to be on the twenty-sixth, it's probably eight or the thirty.
Yeah. So the uh, remittances for July is due the twenty-eighth of this month, right? Or is it, he's asking for July to be due the first week of September?
About a month behind.
A month.
A bit a month behind, but he's running a month behind now, that one week. While I, while I, while I stood, one week, one week, which, which makes it, like I said, the first of September is for the July date. Unless we add the day of August.
Oh, you moved, you already moved it forward this month?
So that's what this, that's what I'm, I'm.
Yes, I understand.
We talked about.
So it was three weeks before, you just moved it forward.
Yeah.
The end of August for July date.
Just put it.
I must move an additional week to the.
I hope that's what.
That is exactly what he was asking.
That was the two different periods.
Set it on the twenty-eighth.
I see. So the end of August for July is fine?
Set it on the twenty-eighth day of September.
Oh, yeah.
I'd say twenty-nine.
I'm misunderstanding that you're adding a week here.
Sometimes, uh, would, would, it's like, first, uh, the month next following, say the first of the month next following.
I think the solution is just, we're, that simple is what you made in yours.
Which is actually right, the first would be July, so, I know we didn't want it to go back that far, so we did. Anyway, that's within, that's a week later. But it is, it's another one, it's very young, but I'll make the motion that we, for this prosecution, move it up a week, forty-eight.
You have no trouble with that, Dr. Strager? You have no problem with that?
I think they had a problem with the rookie for staying all.
Okay. Part-time situation with a rookie? Through the contract, do their, so it could be a deadline date, so there are problems. So, anyway, we fixed it. What about you, Jill? I'll second. I brought this mission to court. I got so away from all these stuff.
Okay. So we're going up to, I have, Jimmy, you look together, you notice.
All in.
And instead of, maybe our actuals, uh, later, move them all in, all this. Post, posted, it'll be due the twenty-eighth of, uh, yes, uh. Okay, so while in favor of the uh, motion, well, motion, uh, approved, so, uh, permission to, uh, to modify the date. For the, on, it's a few to the count from the twenty, through the twenty-eighth of the month, that's all, for the period, all in favor.
Do you need to send those to the other detective agency to, to take?
We're sending all the.
Everybody will get money for it.
Re, uh, we're saying, re-saying.
Not re-saying, but re-saying.
Re-saying.
Those two words, meaning opposite, they spell, all sound the same.
We're not pretending we're advancing.
English might be strange.
Okay. Okay, out of number ten, discuss, consider, we're building out more of a project, hoping to say DNC, first construction.
We have. It's a lot of the post.
Well, we had to do it, we had to do it way back earlier.
Yeah, we had the first one in there that's A, and the second, B, and the last one, C, and the pitch group is C, and the, that one is D. I think that one is A.
Well, first, we're pricing the layer towards a construction in this time period. In my opinion, it's uh, construction correct and most of the court. And, and the most is more correct. Well, this proposal, obviously, we're not expecting, but needs to be, it's the L C. Now, my, we worry about that, and then he, he thinks that, he thinks that. We're able to, we're able to. to do it mostly, you know, we sometimes...
The B, that's the pipe within the pipe. Yeah, that's the B, the pipe within the pipe.
Yeah, and it's galvanized, galvanized, uh, well, time, anyway. It's getting 40, I think. I don't know, it looks like that's, without being a professional engineer, or not having the building experience.
Are they still standing? They're gonna have a break here?
Still standing.
The one that I proposed is yet a two-fold usage of. It may not be historical looking, but once it gets covered up with vines, it's like it'll make it different, what it's like. The second thing is, I'm sure same thing might happen at one point, and no one, if no one's ever died, you'd have a flat roof there that you couldn't have done the whiz without doing more structure to it to make it sound. Well, in this situation here, you could always go back to something that happened to the vines, which you made on top of it, make it a facility out of it that would be usable, instead of just being a facility there every day. The other thing is, is it's all open in there, it's open where you can get in there and do things with it without having to, sort of, hold it all the time.
That's not a good idea for the way you put it.
When you put squares, just like a box.
Okay.
I don't know why they're squares, squares in there right now.
Only, 40 by 40, you want to set.
It goes between 16 and 27, I'm over, so many, yeah.
Is any, we'll have to re-poke, uh, re-poke?
That's really my main concern with the whole thing. Obviously, having these bolts concrete in, she's got that on there, because previously there was a few of them, but I think bolt, having the thing bolted up, it's hard to do construction underneath that thing, but new pipes there, we gotta get it cut towards.
We know this, Mike.
Yes, because you don't want to be the one to set the thing on fire. And I think bolting, if you have a piece that needs to be replaced, it's a lot easier to get in there to replace it, takes less crew, less work, and you can get in there and do that, bolting, that's really my, the only thing that I would, that was my suggestion of Michael Cook, too, was to have a bolt. That's really the one thing that I would say would be...
You know, I was talking to Lee Wildin, I think that, that structure's been there. He said he would keep, but she's always dirt, it's just unfortunate. Yeah, it was like in the 30s, wasn't it?
If they did the construction in 2004.
Forty-four years ago. So it's been there that long, and it's done, it's done.
It's still great, yeah, it's still great.
You know, they said there's a lot of beer.
Well, like I said, it's...
No, 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 it's a great vine leaning on it.
Well, yeah, and that's one of the things, as this grapevine's growing in, growing tighter, it's actually, it's holding it, you know, down and stuff, and, uh, just, for repairs in the future. Having a footing for those, or whatever's in the ground, and to have a bolt in it. I just, just whatever you want to do, but I think bolting in would be a smart play.
I think we got, I think we got citizens on the bolting. I think we're all...
I think all these designs are bolted, right?
No.
First, first one's a weather. Yeah, well, that moves that one out the way.
Yeah, so now we're just starting with B and C. Which, I'm good, either way, I just want, I just want to get started, wanted to get started. I know Lee Wildin wants to get started, too. And when we get whatever galvanized, what, I think what he's got on C here is me taking the pipe to Fort Worth to get it galvanized and bringing it back, and we pay for the galvanization with the county, so he can only have that in there.
These are galvanized, he said he got swords for these.
I will, it's what I...
Brother Ivy?
No, well, no, I'm telling you that we'd take, he could take that off that. Right, so whatever that is, we're liking. I've got him, it's just whatever we take or he takes it, you know what I'm saying?
He's price this, we've got the rhino swords to be hails.
Right.
On C?
Or B?
R again.
R again.
So the difference, so the difference between C and B is, B is, the post, is opposed to its flat, whereas C is IV and pitch, is that correct?
Yes.
And B doesn't have the IV?
It's more of a free span.
It's all free span. Which gives you two options, it gives you the option that you've got more room, use for your room underneath it.
And I can, I, I see the, I see the purpose in the flat, on the justice, and then I see what Jimmy said with the pitch, because then you could have like, a little stage in there even, and have like, an ant over there, whatever, when you have those stains, it's hot outside or whatever.
Maneuvering underneath there right now, where they're spaced out, if you're having their tables and stuff, especially those big, heavy wooden tables.
We need to look at tables and that.
Yeah, it's difficult to, even though 14 feet's quite, it is difficult to, or any...
I mean, we have to actually get a skid steer with those tables.
That's, that's what I'm saying, is to get anything, equipment in there, do anything, the tables, the chairs, whatever, you just don't have much room, and you got the post sticking out.
Yeah, we have fun doing that, don't we, Jim?
Everyone say, what's that?
That vine grows up there, it's not going to tell where it is. It'll peach root for a long peach.
Well, just, just to report on that thing, we have more fruit going there this year than we have in the past.
Yeah, we shook it up.
Friends of mine came up, he got 17 gallons of grapes, nearly had them all out at one time.
Was that on both ends?
Uh, no, the, the...
Once a tree really makes them root?
No, the ones that we, so they did, as expected, they would put the buds out of the fruit, but they weren't worried about the survival of them. And they grew leaves around here on what he was expecting, the side, the other side, they were still on, so, uh, for that this year or so. Next year, with the proper pruning and stuff, it should have, both of them will put out that kind of fruit.
And Gitchell cutting.
Yeah.
Michael Cook said to take 12 of the strongest running vines off each one of them, leave them into the...
Yeah. We'll go from the ones on the west, we'll move, run them toward the go east, and then do it the other way.
Almost.
And if we put out enough, you know, you trim it back, the mains to the fruit, you trim it back about 90% every winter, and it puts out perfectly with the shape, because it covers everything, but allows breeze to come through the top. So for an Augusty pin, you get more breeze that's coming through there, so, but, of course, that's not, don't have anything really to do with construction, that's what...
If I'm supposed to hear one day, recommend it, how they have it.
We can do that.
January 5th, where does one?
But, I mean, you do it in the winter, yes.
Only precinct three helps us, huh?
You only, yeah, you only, in the winter is the, that's something we did in January this year, so...
This is definitely winter.
I would say let's get it done this kind of the winter.
I'd say we get the structure done before.
Yeah, well, let's get the structure put up.
I think the structure will be up before here.
I would be up before this, but it's...
Always be up now.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, I know, I know, I know, but it's impatience, but this, can't do it, right?
But if you put that structure up now, and then you go up front and then trees in January, well, it's gonna be open with the other half.
It is, right. You're right, it is.
Take the money to go ahead and finish it up.
Yeah, yeah, I get what he's saying. Can we take, can we, I guess we can take the structure up and round it out, just rip the vines off the trees? Cut the, cut the vines off the trees?
Not without Michael.
I'm not gonna do anything without him watching.
With his orange paint.
Yeah, he would have his orange paint there.
Of course, that east end is not nearly as significant as that west end, it's still significant.
That east end will be a lot easier.
Yeah, because that west end was so bow down, and trees, so old and so big. And the trunks are bigger than that.
The, the east end is, is gonna be a lot bigger, or a lot easier.
I would get more of the, for the horse.
I agree. That's, that's with my, yeah, that's new, F of the town. We don't lose it.
I like bacon.
I like bacon.
I like it, it's crowded.
But he's got nails on this one. He's got the welds on that one. So he's saying they can bolt.
Not only C, but it's more, more of the person.
Great part of one of the reasons you extend it in the summertime before bound in two is to try the shade that this is.
I mean, metal, the gold, so to get this down, it's on this tour.
We have a couple of our tech techs who've dug up there, they can do, didn't have to get all primary, just something else. I don't have to move the ladder.
All you need is...
I know, the, the second year here, we had good, um, pre-dead year, we had good fruit. This year, just, of course, also, we had a great spring, it was rain.
Well, Jim, how much, how much higher is that gonna be than the flat roof?
How much higher? What's the, what's the peak?
You're gonna have to...
So it won't be that much? Because I had somebody asking me about, if we get into a pitch, would, how can they have the grapes with a, just a regular ladder, so it wouldn't be much of a difference.
Well, one of the things, but, from what Michael explained to us, is for, pretty bad, he suggested, uh, do it, uh, you know, 90% airway, during the spring, before it comes, it's gonna be, the fruit can be, will be low hanging, give you, water, and, and fruit black rock.
Be hanging up underneath.
So, yeah, it'll be hanging underneath it, uh, like you say about, maybe, uh, great doors or whatever, like, fingers.
Yeah, the old one, that batched itself, some of them are dead, vines and stuff, they're all over the...
They cool, but they're, they're all, they're, but they're, they're, they're black, they too, a little electric.
Yeah.
Deals, you just...
I'm in Stacy's category. Just want one of them.
Amazing.
I'm in the motion, we're getting the C.
The only thing I say is, uh, I say Jimmy's point, you know, being more freestanding, that old ground out there's pretty sandy. With all that weight, like it was, pushing down on all this, you're gonna have a leg against the ground, oh, oh, uh. Put a pipe, you'll have four.
Jimmy, you talk about weight on top of it, like a wet stove or whatever, one side being on, the other giving it some lateral stresses to push that...
Yes.
We're pushing the center wall sideways, we're, we're talking, we're talking 8-inch I pinch here. 8-inch I pinch?
8-inch I pinch.
I've heard structure to do or sound, then, then, then pitch, I've had some experience with something like that. And that is a lot like, it was, makes it a lot like...
I, I've had a lot of experience, too. If you take the, you take the ring out here.
The what?
The ring out here, and you see the weight that's already on top of that ring right now, before it was just tin, now you got a, got a cover on top of that tin right now, a different cover on what we had. So you, you experience that, plus you put a wet stove on top of that, and see what difference the structure is, and that's all we're expecting to do.
I believe the B. My, my calling is just, it's, it's sandy, that's always.
I mean, why just do, do four on it, basically, if we went out there with our belly dumps, nothing, a lot of dirt in there?
We're talking about all these woods, and it's that more clear, the whole, that structure is, is sandy, it's sandy, sandy, yeah. But we got that motion on the side.
I like the I. My, my, my main concern is both.
Is what? Cause the other one doesn't have an I. I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and go with C. I'll say C.
All the verticals.
All the verticals.
Right?
Yeah, I'm staying, I care. It's amazing.
I guess I've heard opposed to others.
There's...
Or will recommendations of the builder?
C, so that's your, our D's. Thank you for making motion for B, it's gonna go out the same way.
I know what I.
No, it's gonna be what I, I, I'm gonna take.
I was off the same.
Okay, wait, everybody agreed on that one.
Okay, what? What's your answer?
We've really got...
Some negative decisions, you can't go voting for, sorry, I'm missing one, we're voting.
Vote for strength.
Why do you think that's strong structure?
Probably strong structure, the...
That's all things, is that, like, all we... Once we have a round set up, it's a, look like that, I think. If the foundation is put in there correctly, it's not, that's the key to all of them. You have all those structures in there, and it's like what Rob Stacy's talking about, and you see it out there right now, that those posts been pushed down out there and ground, they're out facing, and it's just gonna have the same amount of structure as that right now.
You can't build it without the feet.
Not like that, you can't, not, not free span.
I would like to put it back like it was.
Do you think there's more?
Well, I'm not sure, 41, we've got some history to it, all right, but we're probably first rules here, we're ready to grab the fire out of our... There's more here, we're ready to grab the fire out of the.
Well, you talked to Alan Hump, I was about to give remove the whole thing.
So this nineteen thousand three hundred and twenty, with him fault, it's the same.
Same one structure in between. I like, I like the I B, it's like having more room with that post underneath there, but I like to. You, you gotta, uh, we gotta have a pitch, and I know the triangular safe, but get that straight.
Yeah, yeah. Whenever we're rerunning the electrical down there with the I B, we got a chance to run that electrical in.
It can be more hidden. More protected.
Instead of having a trench.
Yeah, I don't think when you jack it out there to.
Instead of going out.
Do the electricity just make.
If you bring it up the center.
Do you agree?
And you run it down sort of.
You jack it toward.
Check them up on one end.
Or the electricity can.
Yeah, make a savings up for the next eighty nine years, sure. That's, that's just what I'm doing here, I think for future.
But we need to.
I didn't like to comment about it, uh, that's what I'm saying, you, you.
We, we, we have no idea. What the gears are.
So you're making a motion for B here?
Well, yeah, I guess call it motion that I, I for, uh, I want two, two votes with Mr. Science there at the standing. Well, I'll vote for President, I'll vote for. And I'll vote motion out there for, I'll say nothing for B. Hell B. It was, uh, pretty strong. August fourteen, twenty nine, thank you, they are.
Thank you.
That's I, no, that's I B. His B. Flat top structure, uh, is, uh, pretty identical to one of the there. Like the way the people support it. And freeze, and freeze. Safety's out here. Motion's out there, there's that.
This is on market.
B.
B. Hey.
I don't care, it's one of our, happy happy with anything we did.
I'm staying with you. I, I, I'm gonna go with, cause we need to get started on something. Number eight. Got it. Three, one, one. And then, can you make a motion that we give Lee Wiley ten thousand to start this thing? For half of it, half of it, he needs half to start.
Can't do this, can you? You can't free play for him. We have four.
Yeah, we did. I mean, after you purchase it, we can immediately reverse.
When we did it with the courthouse, we made half of the courthouse, and then when we finished, we put the other house. They were not. Huh?
And then you voted against it then?
He can purchase it, and we can immediately reverse it, but we can't give the money.
Yeah, pitch, bring it from church, we stick right in, they can. He can write a check on Friday afternoon, then he can just bank it when he morning.
Some dope. I don't want to vote it on B.
We got so young, we're free play. Well.
Yeah, we did, and then it.
I don't see why they can't split it to us.
That's not.
We do that on paper.
Sir.
Our, our, what camp where we talked about using that one.
Yes.
Let's do that, do it out.
This, five, one.
One.
And this one.
No, we can do it at high.
Oh, what are we doing for that?
You can't do this at high, you're not enough money, huh?
Yes. She don't give you the year, she don't give you the.
There's seventy nine thousand five hundred eighty six dollars instead of ten.
There's only forty thousand dollars budgeted for this year, and fixing to twenty eight thousand for K.
But last year we did use it, and we got forty thousand last year. She didn't give you the whole. She didn't give you the whole total in the fund, she gave you the year.
We're using another fund for this. We discussed, in the video where we discussed this, for that bid, we're using another fund, we said we had some money in the fund we could use.
What was that?
So the huge arc out of money there?
You can actually give any, any one of the other funds you want.
Any way?
It's up to the commissioner's discretion, even against any other funds, there's certain rules on some of them.
Uh, this Harper has been under discussion for four or five years, being repaired.
Yeah, I don't think it's promised, just like I mean, see what.
We've got five forty, well.
We have thirty thousand.
Yeah, we propose a budget forty thousand dollars for the Thor, for FY eighteen ninety.
Thirty thousand left, I'm not voting.
Like it's forty, a hundred fifty, and forty.
We'll have a new budget amount, but you take care of here, starting in January.
The capital improvement, the forty thousand. Yeah, we spent three thousand, uh, there, I guess, already paid.
We can start taking any money out of that until January.
But year to date, we spent three thousand, one third for that capital group, so there's still thirty, thirty, thirty seven thousand.
And we still have a place two of the museum to build it, and some restaurants, clean up some signs to do, and some other things that.
We're going to step for twenty or forty thousand.
Forty thousand. We'll discuss money from another camp, we'll discuss this our convenience here.
Let's look at the time payment.
So will you refurbish the cannon and?
Judge, look at the time payment, see what the rules are on that, we have sixty three thousand in there.
Call them a vote.
The, uh, can you do any part?
Yes.
How you doing, sir?
Good. County planning, so please.
Is that staying the nickel?
Yeah. Sean came in though, it's, um, I guess, Thursday, right, Thursday, Thursday. Thursday and, uh, Rob Rokey's bringing in this, um, mine, adding this whole identical Harper County, we got to modify it slightly in one area or two. And all the way to gone, take it over and point, but, whereas never.
Chairman, thank you very much for your time today, um, again, my name is Sean, I'm the vice president of renewables for various counties, and we are the, the new owners of the Trinity of Wind Farm, uh, which is in Archer and Young County. Um, the map that I just handed you, uh, there is a, kind of demarcation line, uh, which is right about here, so the blue, uh, owner building, uh, just north of that owner building, that's kind of coming line, uh, between Archer and Young. So most of the wind farm, uh, most of the turbines are actually in Archer coming, uh, yeah. Um, and in front of you, um, as we started this process, um, we, we actually met with, uh, both, uh, Judge Bullock and, uh, Judge Jackson, to make sure that everything that we were doing between the two counties was almost identical, uh, so that, you know, there wasn't any favoritism or any changes between the two counties. Uh, the agreement that you have before you was actually written by, um, eight lady, who's the, um, the attorney for, uh, the attorney for Archer coming. Um, there is one, and I literally just came from Archer coming to come here, uh, there is one change, uh, that they have requested, and on the far east side, Andrew Rowley, uh, we have that, we have that building in Archer coming, um, not realizing that Archer was in Young County. So we would like to amend, um, this agreement and add that.
You guys leave the land here.
Uh, right, the way, the way I have it listed, I have the entire road all the way up.
Yeah.
So we just had to amend it, so that it's just, just.
You also need to amend six A there about, uh, all such maintenance repairs and junk cans of roads and colors approved by Commissioner Woolf and Commissioner Mark.
Oh, sir.
Those.
Okay, and I have a G.
Yes.
So you have Andrew Road?
I've got four Andrew Road, yes, and I have Garder Ranch Road, also that, Alamo Road. And Alamo Road, you gonna be on your deal also? You have a mark there, it's Alamo Road also.
So yes, it's gonna need to.
You need that Alamo Road also.
We want. No, sir, we're, we're not actually gonna use Alamo.
You're not gonna use Alamo Road?
The way we have it listed, Alamo, we're actually coming here.
Campbell, but Campbell's yours, isn't it, Jim?
I don't know, Campbell's license, or Stacy's. All the road, the Alamo Road.
But it's in Young County, that's on.
Yeah.
But access to the turbines, B, the, you will not utilize Alamo Road, B, and C.
Not utilizing on, then it'd be sixteen, B fifteen?
Nope, but, we know that there's a, a drive that goes in.
Yes.
Um, but however, for all the agri trucks, all of the heavy components, we're gonna take a frame of the Campbell Road, and then use the existing access.
Do I look off Campbell Ranch too?
That's correct. And it's.
So main two roads you're gonna be doing, mine's gonna be Andrew Road and Garder Ranch Road.
That's correct.
Daisy and Tony, you're gonna be doing, yes, it's gonna be Campbell Road, Indian, and Hill Hill.
Paul and Indian Road there.
No, he said, he won't be going down Russian Road, yeah, you're gonna go down Russian?
Um, we do have to go down Russian Road.
Okay, that's my route too.
That, that short stretch, uh, just to get the long term.
Yeah.
And, uh.
I'll let you say, you better, you said, you better not go down any of this way.
Let me, let me restate that, so Garder Ranch Road will use that short piece.
Yeah.
Russian Road, um, I got a high pick up front stuck there.
That's what I'm saying.
About two weeks ago, which we're not, the only way I could ever use that road, is to put about two and a half feet of road base in it. I know you guys love that, but I can't afford it. So, we, we won't be using Russian Road.
Okay.
Um, actually, on Russian Road, we will have signs that say, no wind farm access.
Okay.
Uh, we'll do, we'll do the same thing on, uh, Alamo Road as well, just to make sure that no one is using that.
Okay. Did that?
Okay, back to your contract, do you have a, um, you have a copy of that, or you, you gotta memorize?
I gotta memorize it.
On, um, six B, in the event that, uh, Lance and Rover repair the Trinity industry, they're not performed, or they said, Dave, blah, 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 county may do so, should, and then it shouldn't continue to say with reimbursement towards the county.
Um, we can, we can actually, I think, perfectly fine with that.
Maybe it just reads that the county. Then the county may perform the road repairs required from obligations to the county arising out of the. To relate to this agreement or applicable expenses law, for what it requires when it's being repaid.
And that's what the, that's the other reason for the bond, is that's your guarantee that you will be reimbursed for any work that you do.
Uh, the state.
I, I can tell you that in the twenty eight years I've done this, I have never had county or city or even a, a DOT touch anything on any road that we.
Good. Well, the last time when they, uh, well, the initial construction of this, they go off on Hilton Road and it collapsed, well, one side, one location, there was two, three foot coves that collapsed during construction, and they drove off the left by ways. And, and there, they had been replaced, so everything's lived today on my runs, but, uh, that happened this time on the technical.
And, and that's the other, um, so exhibit B, uh, which is blank, is, um, one of the things I wanted to introduce myself and meet two people that have, had loans in the history. Um, we have a third party consultant called Fisher, uh, Fisher Engineering Consulting, uh, they'll actually be doing videotape, the GPS, all the culver different story, a copy of that is given to the county, and I can have additional copies made for all of you as well. So that's your pre-construction before we ever do anything, then, and then we'll do it again post-construction, set a meeting up, um, where the three of us or five of us, some people, will actually go out, look at the roads, um, pre-construction, post-construction, any repairs that you will feel, any to be done, will be completed before this, I think it's. Uh, it'll be August of twenty twenty for the post-construction, and within probably the next two weeks, or previous.
So it's gonna take that mountain, the region, all those, you know, camp? Or the whole project?
The, the whole project, yes, so we're, we've got some constraints, because it's a, an existing wind farm, where, you know, we can't just take and shut everything off, because we need the revenue from turbines that we do have, so we have to do it in sequence, and ERCOT, kind of changed the rules because they have commissioners on some other repair projects that we're kind of fighting through with ERCOT.
So, you know, rather than, notice a lot of them stop running right now, to put the ones that are running, if you are selling electricity, you think it's another way of contract.
So right now, the Trinity Hills Wind Park, it has nineteen turbines, um, only fifty three are actually, yet, of those fifty three that are running there, um, because of some structural issues that, um, turbines themselves have, they're derated to about one point six megawatts instead of the two point five.
Should you all settle a little bit?
Yes. Last week, last week, our power price was fourteen thousand dollars per megawatt, and that was probably the best component of your hands.
Will y'all create a, um, location, uh, stop pile, uh, parts and pieces? Or y'all just? I know that the O and M site is pretty small as far as location and found vehicles, equipment, turbine head blade and all that, will y'all create a, um, site out there?
So, so right now, um, if you look at where the O and M building is, um, just off the highway, the, the land's getting coming, uh, directly south of the highway there, um, there's a twenty acre parcel, that twenty. That twenty acres will have all the tops that'll strip and our wood, our whole base and whatnot. That'll be a lay-down area for, for some of the coolers, some of the bolts, any of the ancillary parts, cable, like those types of things. But all the major components, the tower adapter section, blades, the nacelle, everything, that'll be taken directly through the pads.
Right there, Lord, you know, for people like.
Mission Building? Yes. Mr. Bullock is the, the new owner. We, we have a perpetual lease that gives us the right to do that. We have, we have.
Last time y'all had that side, and then on down almost to the north end of Hilton Road on the east side, you have location there with the office buildings and large area of lay-down equipment.
That's correct. And you will have it just? We will, just not in that location. So just on the north side of the Oldham Village, there's another thirty acre parcel. About fifteen acres of that will be lay-down area for office trailers, additional parking.
And how would you access that coming out of Hilton Road?
Coming out.
Yourself? You don't have to build a system?
Yep, no issue. And we have a, Fisher has actually designed that culvert system in that entire area.
And so, once completed in, in August of 2020 or whatever, y'all will take that system out.
And then whatever culvert's left over, whatever acreage left over, we offer that to the landowner, the county or.
Okay.
Archer told me, hey, you know, we'll take all the Young Counties too.
Yeah, yeah. We'll take all ours.
We'll lay that back down. I know how that works.
Yes, sir.
William, are you going to alter this with one bill?
Yes. So we need to change the commissioner's fees.
Yes.
We need to shorten the amount of Andrew's Road. The third piece was, I gave you an option of a road use bond or a right-of-way bond. So I have three different attorneys. I have a New York attorney, I have California attorney, and then we have a local Texas attorney.
Boy.
Yeah. They don't like billing me, but they all, none of them agree with us. So, um, so as we talk.
They want butter and jelly sandwiches.
Exactly. So as we talked about road use plans, the way those bonds are normally structured, it's only for the gold weeds. None of the ancillary pieces do that. However, a right-of-way bond includes everything from fence to fence. And if there's taller damage, if there's no drainage damage or anything like that, any signs of the damage, that's what the right-of-way bond.
I think you're already wanting to be more.
All right.
Also, you mentioned when you were there about why some utilities were already in Long County.
Yes, I was going to get to Exhibit C.
Okay.
So the other part of this agreement, when, when Lacker and BP Wind Energy originally constructed this, they put several utilities within the Young County right-of-way. However, can't find a, you know, approval and acknowledgement, nothing. So, and maybe the same thing in Archer County, same thing under US High of Seventy-Nine, never got throughable straight into the world.
They would do something like.
BP. I'm finding that out. So as part of this agreement, what we're asking for is an acknowledgement and permission to keep those utilities.
Down here?
Those utilities, right now, there's a thirty-four five, thirty-four thousand five hundred volt cable that goes underneath Andrew's Road and runs along the north side of Garvey Road and crosses Garvey Road.
Yeah, subvention.
Subvention, that's correct. And we're, we're just looking for Young County to acknowledge that, yes, we understand those exist and yes, we have the permission to continue to use those in the future. And that's what Exhibit C of the agreement is.
Would be any additional copper added to this project?
No, we're using all the existing. So the, and I guess, maybe I should have started a little different. So the repowering that we're doing, we're actually reusing the foundation, all the collective cables, this and substation, this and my optic network. All we're doing is taking the nacelle off, the blades off, adding an adapter section to go from a clipper bolt pattern to a Festus bolt pattern and to give us a little extra height for the conditional link. And then we'll put, you know, a new rotor on, a new nacelle on, and then new cables inside.
So what length do you think we're adding?
We're adding a twenty-two foot adapter section. It's about five point four meters.
Will y'all be a huge pressure company?
So right now, for construction, Festus, who is the OEM manufacturer, they'll be the general contractor, they've hired a Texas crane company, Boss Crane and Reading out of Longview, Texas, over on the east side. They'll be doing all of the transport work, they'll be doing all of the disassembly, all the assembly work and then hauling it. There's a, a small company from Cleveland, Durham, Graham, that is doing some of the grading work. And then another large wind contractor is doing the bulk of the grading work. And then there's a, a national company called JMS that's going to do all the tower wiring and substation. We are trying to hire as many locals as we can. Actually, Boss Crane and Reading, they were here at your Chamber of Commerce, and I believe they're hiring some local oilfield workers, workers from Archer County that work on the project.
So as far as your, does that mean you kind of sub this whole deal out?
I'm, I'm the owner.
The owner, but you sub, most of it out?
Yes.
Yeah. Because y'all, y'all have a structure, you're planning this, planning this with the company.
So we take, so Aries Management, the parent company of Aries Infrastructure and Power, they, they'll take Archer County and the retired county, the New York Fire Department, all of their investments go over to Aries Management, and that's obviously.
So as far as the security or the, the, the Sheriff's Department, the person management and all in and so forth, they need to get together these subs to try to, you know, uh, put the right plan, if you will.
Yes.
On this construction phase, I know you might have some problems with that.
Absolutely.
As we did in the past, we had a little problem in the past, a fire buried there. And so, so they can come back and fix it. They can play it together.
Yes, so we have an existing, the existing BP plan, emergency action plan, that was adopted by the emergency management for Young County and for Archer County. That same plan, which is took BP normal off, but the unit went to our normal off. But we do have meetings that we will be having prior to the turbine showing up for the fire department, sheriff's department, the constable, you know, and the emergency management. We, we actually met with the hospital two weeks ago to inform them of the plan as well. And Judge, there's another email that I will send you. We have a meeting with DOT today on the route for turbines that I gave. So the turbines are actually going to be coming right through the center of the county to the right. So because that's the route that the DOT wants, I will be meeting with the county sheriff, county constables, fire department, and the local police department as well. And your number's in the plans. I wanted to give that to you first, you get that to the show.
I just didn't help you to wear a ball of red and sign it up here on top of it. It's going to be handling there.
This will be the twenty-sixth wind farm that I built in Texas. And I built about twenty-eight thousand megawatts.
We've got some smaller areas out now with lots of towers on.
And if you can get on board to build the transmission out that way, I'd be more than happy to throw a few.
I've stayed in court a lot there.
I need more than one special.
Um, which do we expect those components to be going up?
So the, it's all start with construction, probably the second week in September with lay-down yard, those types of things. We've got about a month and a half to two months worth of civil grading work that has to be done, rebuilding the crane pads, building the access road. First tower component sections will start showing up about, I think it's the tenth of November is the first shift in. And I think the last part is about March.
Yeah, they're very big starter.
Um, right now, no way. So it's.
Are you speaking total, total wind farm or, you know, you know, the portion I think that jumped out?
Total.
Do you have an additional lay-down yard or charter again somewhere?
We do not. Yeah, I mean, both of the lay-down yards will be in Young County. So that, that was why the comment was made that the aggregate for the lay-down yard was the nicest material and that's why Archer wants it. I told them, that's not usually how it works, but if you guys want armor else for it, I'll be eight foot, I don't want to get involved.
So we need to decide on the right-of-way bond, which bond we want to.
Yes, Ken, how is that? I'm, I think we're very transparent company, we're, we're trying to make sure that you have.
Are you going to like the revisions in this?
Yes. And, and sir, would you like, would you like to add a sentence on the reimbursement here?
I think we spelled it out.
I, I, that's very simple and I don't have any.
So that is, that is the bigger reimbursement. Twenty days, so I'm going to invoice the presentation.
I mean, just, you're like twenty days?
Which is the number, and if we're pretty much standing three years.
I, I, I wouldn't love that. I'll, I'll put the twenty days. We can, I mean, I can actually give, even to you guys if less than half thirty.
I started there.
It, I'll put it, that's fine. There's no problem.
We'll have, we'll have the bond.
I've, I've never had a bond on any of my projects.
I'd like to keep that there in cash. Will you present this back to me in the next hour? And all, what we need is mostly on second to enter into the road use agreement. Trinity Hill's Wind Farm, the wheels, LLC.
Yes.
I'll provide.
And everybody.
Maybe you got all the revisions here, buddy.
Judge, what I'll do, I'll, I'll actually send you a red line, what I mentioned, a change, and then once you say yes, I'll give that, then I'll, I'll actually hand deliver to.
Very good. And that's with the right-of-way bond?
With the right.
Would you have another provision remaining for landowner making before start construction? Y'all already have.
We've already.
They're playing.
We do appreciate it, Judge. So we do have, we have another community meeting that will be at the end of September. I will make sure to invite, so they should get here, come here to talk again. For the short presentation, I will serve dinner to whoever shows up.
And I'll have a motion of Mr. Bullock, second of Mr. Rogers to enter into this road use agreement with revisions that have been discussed here. And Mr. Michael will issue the fact that red line, all script if it comes to me or power we, or if he gives that to us.
Yes.
But the commission will also review and I guess that says proof, I'll let you know.
Thank you, sir.
Or you back. I'll present that then, the paper, the last, the last.
Thank you.
I'm glad you're gone. I'm glad you're doing this with y'all.
Thank you very much. So do you need, do you need anything else?
Don't like so.
If I could ask a few more questions?
Yes, sir.
So both of you just send me a either text message or email with your contact information.
Okay.
Or if you have a business card that works too. If you don't have a business card, just write your information on a twenty is best. I would be surprised. I would be amazed. I would like to schedule the inspection and offer for the two of you to come along and then actually if you would like. Otherwise, I'll just make sure that when I get your contact information, I'll send the DVDs to the judge and he can distribute those to you.
And well, twenty-third, twenty-four, somewhere around that.
I think, I think they're talking about the first or second weekend.
Good.
Thank you very much, Judge.
Thank you. All fired. Yeah. Sure. Like, ah, it's easy to do. Bar restriction things are, I think. Lay low. We can get rain out this morning. That's going to be a hundred and seventy day, eighty-eight tomorrow.
Yes, it's been down to eighty-seven. It is.
I'm better for you around that outside of work.
Oh, God. Brazil, rain fork.
And all that part too.
Is it?
Who was putting out that Brazilian fire two hundred years ago?
I don't know.
It's just the way it works.
That's forty-seven percent tonight, twenty-five percent tomorrow, forty-four on Wednesday. That's when it's going to be really cool.
Next up, the pork chop is seven minutes below and we're going to require one thirty. Be good, be fun. All research. Over.
Thank you, Nathan.
I'm fine.
Says your heart. A little tease at time.
When we invoice the ninety-five, the C and we get all that information this past year.
Well, someone happened to serve it again or didn't?
No, I guess we can contact him and get it.
We're having, they're having meetings at about thirty. Democrats all. We've done about the, the service committee.
I thought that guy that he.
Okay, so well, I thought it anymore.
He, yeah, he, he just had.
And Teresa is in charge of the project. Her husband is Mayor Jones, James Jones, Ben Affleck. Right, well. About a week ago, I agree with the Congress and the. Thank you. Thank you. Hold off in force until the first bed. You know, I don't know who the check came from this last time, I don't expect to be sure.
I should have a copy, so, or, and those.
Unless they make some other outside, or party agreement outside of agreement or something, you know, it should, uh, print the hill or BP or the.
But I remember the, the contact person I've had for all these years, I sent it to him, but that's when he contacted.
I guess much, but.
So anyway, I'll look and see. I just, what's the name of the new company?
Various managers, we own every one of them. I go to print the hills out of the city. I don't think I might find a.
It seems like when I sent it to that one guy, he said, I thought they're still in the same.
This one is in Harsham. This shop. So, Area Manning is in New York.
Oh.
I'm not sure if you.
I'll see it. I'm, I should have made some notes on that. Okay, we'll see you after lunch. We've got a probate scheduled tomorrow at 10:30.